Hello. Hello. Lady. The water, right?
And they're gonna refuel and redo everything and then. Hawaii.
I knew that you were doing that.
In cold weather.
We've only done increases with that, but I I'm looking at their scan.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a regulation.
Sometimes.
There's anybody.
We got a really good start tonight.
I'll let you know tomorrow morning.
Thanks. Yeah. I just told him give us a two hour delay. Like four, six forty five. Okay, very good games.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the last meeting of the East Temple County Planning Commission for this year. Please join me in opening the meeting with the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I think Dan, Dan is on.
Yeah, he's on, yes.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, Mrs. Will is not here this evening, so I'd ask, uh, let me see your. Joshua, would you, Mr. Bolton, will you be voting members either? Sure, okay. All right, the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes from clear back in September, December, fourteenth meeting. Uh, I was just looking to see if we had the. Formals, one, three, four, yeah, we should be good. Okay, so um. Does anybody have any changes or recommendations? If not, then be ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as presented for September fourteenth.
I'll second the motion. Okay, we have motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Fullerton, that we approve the minutes of the September fourteenth meeting as submitted. All those in Figna, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I've seen.
Still abstain.
So it's how many voting members did we have there? Dan was one. Jim. Dwight. Was there Josh?
John.
Mike. Okay, you're good. One, two, three, four, five. And two extensions. All right, then, moving on to the next meeting, the October twelfth meeting. Same situation.
I have one change at the adjournment. Mr. Fullerton did not adjourn the meeting, I did.
Yes.
Cause he was absent. And I think the twenty eight, eight twenty eight is incorrect as well.
Might be seven.
Completely missed that line.
It might have been seven ten.
No. He's just trying to get the shorts meeting.
He didn't beat the record.
He did not. It was probably seven eighteen.
Yep, yeah. Okay, there any other recommended changes? If not, I'm ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the October twelfth, twenty twenty two Planning Commission meeting minutes.
As.
As amended.
Mrs. Burn, who have a motion by Mr. Deter, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we approve the October twelfth meeting minutes. Um, as amended by Mr. Deter, it's seen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? I will abstain.
I will abstain.
As well. Three abstentions, then. So it's one, two, three. What you guys voted for? One, two, three, four. Plus Dan. Plus, yeah, yeah.
A stand.
So it's five, thank. I counted you one. Oh. Who voted yes? Put your hands up.
My.
Dan. Wasn't me. One, two, three, four, five, six, six. And the abstentions were Fullerton, Rohr, and Matt. Matt, you abstain, I guess. So it's six and three. Now, yeah, nine people. Okay, all right. Enough for that difficult stuff, let's go. All right, um, this evening, um, we've been made aware that, um, the applicants for Commerce Herb, um, final land development and subdivision plan needs more time. So those items. They asked to be tabled, so, um, we have a motion to do such, please.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table. Is it two different plans?
Yes.
The two plans for.
I'm a.
Perilous, mercy lord, mercy lord, listen, Lord, so far.
We have a second, please.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Data, that we, uh, table the, uh, agenda items, uh, for Commerce Hub, final subdivision plan and final land development plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So that would be unanimous then, seven zero. All right, so the first plan for review is M X L Industries Stormwater Management. Just a second. Do we have a microphone?
Yeah, if you go up to the podium.
Is that okay? Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you do that? We'll have the drawings up on the screens.
Oh, um. Okay, the, uh, this is a plan for, um, some additional parking, um. For, for the M X L, uh, M X L is, uh, a manufacturing facility at seventeen sixty four Roerstown Road. And, um. They, they find they're in need of additional parking. Um, they have enough parking for each shift, but they have some shift overlap, which is causing them some issues. So, um, they like to, to add some parking, so there, we're showing, um, a twenty one additional spaces. Um, and, uh, and it's in an open area near, uh, near the front of the property. The, um. That's the, really the only improvements on the property is the additional parking, um, and we're providing for stormwater, um, facility underneath parking and in the form of an inflation bed. Um, so, um, pretty straightforward project, um. The rest of their site is, is not being improved at all. So, um. Where, uh, there's one modification that we're requesting, and that's, um, to, uh, allow the. The engineer, the stormwater engineer for the project to, um, do the geological valuation in lieu of, uh, having a professional geologist do this. He's providing that, you know, the same information that a geologist would provide in terms of analysis of, uh, geological conditions, so, um. And there, your engineer is recommending approval of that, so. That's about it.
Yeah, I think if the, uh, you know, the engineer agrees that that person has the credentials and can do it, I don't, I don't see a reason to disagree. Is this just for the stormwater, just for that waiver, or do we also have the plan to take?
Just for the waiver.
Just for the waiver, okay. Does anybody have any questions for the option? And there's, I assume nobody on Zoom for question comments? If not, then I think we could take a motion for the, uh, modification.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisor's approval of modification request number one, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the Stormwater Management Plan for M X L Industries, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That was, that was agree, right, Dan? That was, yay. Okay, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, next up is twenty twenty, twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue Final Land Development.
Hi, good evening, Brian Cooley with D C Go and Associates. Uh, representing the owner of the property. Uh, here tonight for the final land development plan for twenty seven twenty three and twenty seven twenty seven Columbia Avenue. Uh, I'll go over what's proposed. Uh, there's a series of modifications we're requesting. Uh, we can, I can answer any questions the planning commission has. Uh, so just the worrying at Planning Commission, Columbia Avenue to the south, uh, this is the mobile home park on the left. And then Hurley Industries is just off on the left hand side over here. Uh, the property is about seventeen acres. Uh, it is split zoning, so there's Enterprise to the north, the community business center to the south, which is this entire area here. Uh, there is a, an existing wetland area, uh, located off on the right hand side of the property. Uh, this is, is served by, uh, Lasser Public Sewer. And currently, there's an existing on lot well, which is located in about in this area. Uh, there was previous apartments and some other outbuildings, uh, that existed many years ago. In addition, there's some existing impervious, it's out front here. Uh, these buildings in the back have since been taken down. This existing pervious out front will remain, uh, and there's no plans for any development out front at this time. Uh, so the owner is proposing, uh, a series of things on the property. One is, this is the existing Hurley Parking Lot, which is part of this property. Uh, so the owner is proposing outdoor vehicle storage in this area. Um, there'll be about fifty five parking spaces or so. Uh, and this will be mainly for boats and RVs and, and maybe some larger, uh, trailer type storage. Uh, this one will not be any tractor trailer overnight storage, but like a boat type trailer. Um, so again, there's about fifty five spaces here. Uh, in addition, there are two large storage unit buildings and two smaller ones on the left. Uh, it's about twenty seven thousand square feet total of storage area, and it's about, it's thirty six units. Again, this is for boats and RVs, and again, some, some trailers. Um, this won't be like the small individual units for, you know, people's things or anything like that. Um, in addition, we are proposing an eight unit apartment building, which is on the other side of the access drive. Uh, we're showing sixteen parking spaces, uh, just to the north side of the access drive, uh, and those will, uh, provide access to the apartments.
Do the apartments have garages?
They do not, no. Uh, as part of this, uh, right now, there's a ten foot farm lane which comes all the way back. Uh, way up here is, this is a large farm and an old tree drive is way up here. There's an existing farmhouse up here. So there's a ten foot farm lane on this property which goes all the way back to that. Um, as part of this plan, we'll be removing that connection to Columbia Avenue, and then we are proposing a new access drive. Um, which would then connect, connect to Columbia Avenue, which of course requires a PENDUP permit for that. Uh, as part of this plan, again, the, there's a sewer for Lassa that runs across the site. The apartments will connect to public sewer. Um, we also proposing a public water line with a meter pit through Lancaster City Water that would service the apartment buildings in the back. And that water line would run along the access drive. Uh, there's no water or sewer necessary for the storage units. There's also no water sewer necessary for, uh, the vehicle storage in the back. Uh, Nate, can you go second sheet? Uh, from a stormwater perspective, there's no storm or on, uh, stormwater on site. Uh, we are proposing two rain gardens. Uh, rain garden one located just to the south of the wetland area, rain garden two located to the north. Uh, those will mitigate stormwater from all the proposed improvements, uh, for all the two year volume as well as stormwater rate for the entire project. Uh, and again, this will connect the public sewer, uh, through the easement here and then public water coming up from Columbia Avenue. Uh, as far as approvals are concerned, we do have approval from City Water as well as Lassa for capacity and for the land development plan. Um. And we also have approval from the township as far, as far as emergency services are concerned. Uh, so we did run a truck turning template for the fire truck all the way back to here, as well as the anticipated RVs that would be maneuvering back to the parking lot. Uh, and the access drive is able to accommodate both fire truck and the RVs. Um, just a couple of things pending. Uh, we've submitted, uh, twice to PENDUP. We did submit a third time, just a, a few miscellaneous comments remaining. Uh, we anticipate receiving the PENDUP permit hopefully within a couple of weeks. Um, the other portion of the project is the MPDS permit. Uh, we did receive a completeness letter from the Conservation District where, uh, their initial review of all the stormwater is complete and meets the regulations. Uh, this time, we're just right, waiting on a technical review of just the E N S design itself. Uh, we anticipate getting that review next week, next week with the MPDS permit to follow soon after. Uh, does, does Planning Commission have any questions just on the plan, the layout plan, or any grading plan, or anything that I had so far?
Just clarify, um.
The access road is not considered a road then, as far as a cul-de-sac, as, as far as the township is concerned? And the length thereof?
Not for the, the use that's in there, no. Um, the, the. I think there was an additional connection to the north at one time, um, and with, uh, an access drive that serves a certain number of uses, it would be considered then a local road. But they have requested some relief of some of the improvements tied to that. Um, so. The cul-de-sac length and things that wasn't looked at that way, um, by staff or engineer, uh, from the sketch plan phase or with the plan review here.
Yeah, Nate, can you go to the previous? Yeah, so as mentioned, there was a, a second point of access provided on the north side of the, of this proposed access drive. Uh, to connect to the farm here. That's just shaded to account for the impervious in the event that it's ever built. But it would not be constructed as part of this plan for the reasons that, uh, that Nick gave. So this is just a private access drive will not be offered for dedication to the township at all. And the entire lot's under one ownership. This is not being subdivided at all.
Quick question. I, I know the area, so is, are the mobile homes still there? Is that part of the property? Are they no longer there?
No, they're all here, but it's not part of the property.
So is the existing lot that you're looking to be able to transition over to the RV trailer lot so forth, are there lights there now?
For the existing parking lot up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, there are a few lights that early put in years ago. I don't think they were, they met really any specifications, but the owner does plan to just. Either replace those fixtures with an LED, um, or maybe just put in one or two just to accommodate lighting out there.
Yeah, I was just thinking consideration in terms of the mobile homes. Yeah, if I remember, that's a little bit of a, a slope too. So, I mean, that's also taking into consideration. I mean, that's just something to think about. Because you don't want it dark, but you don't want it light, so I don't know. That's why I was asking what's there now and.
Right, and there's a, there is an eight foot fence, security fence that runs along the entire property, along the north side and along the east side here. Um, in addition to that, and again, this is part of the waiver request, but we are proposing forty evergreen trees. Between between the parking lot and then the mobile home park property.
So that'll give enough for the, we'll call it light shades as.
Yes, in addition to that, the owner did put up along the entire fence, a black opaque type screen, like a mesh type screen. Uh, to also enhance that security and the screen.
Okay.
And just to clarify, it's, there's, there's not multiple lots in question here. It's, it's just one, one, one large lot.
Okay.
Just to clarify. The, uh, the question earlier was asked about the, the parking and garages, and I think we, with the recent re, uh, revision, there were, there were, uh, signs placed that would. Only allow residents of the dwelling units to park in those spaces rather than be available to those using. Storage, if that helps any, any thoughts there. That was kind of the idea was that two spaces per unit, but they would obviously be reserved for residential use and not be allowed to be used by the. Users of the storage units.
Right, and in, in addition to that, uh, the access drive as it comes through the area where the storage unit buildings are on both sides. Um, there is gravel area between the access drive and the storage unit itself, which provides additional, like an additional pull off area. You know, if someone comes with their car to access their storage unit. Um, so there's no designated parking spaces for the storage unit. Uh, but there are stone areas out front to accommodate that. And again, there is signage for the apartments that these, that these spaces are strictly for the apartment use.
What about, what about guests or activities where you have more? If, if everybody there has two cars, where, where do guests park? Is there a, a, a signed overflow lot?
Uh, well, the ordinance just requires two parking spaces per unit, so that's what's been provided. Um, there is a handicap space as well. Um, that's required part of the building code. Requirement.
Okay. So it's just up to them to be good neighbors, I guess. No big parties.
How much of the RV boat areas enclosed? Are they enclosed spaces for that, or is it all open area?
No, the only open area for RVs and boats is the back lot. All these buildings will be, everything will be inside, interior.
Now, that's something up where the RVs and boats, it's just all open, there's no like enclosed area, like, you know, like garage type.
Are they partitioned?
Yes.
So there's part, so how many spaces are in each building?
Yeah, um.
I know that there's.
There's thirty six total interior units for all four of these storage buildings.
Like nine each?
Well, there's two larger ones, a smaller one and then a, a small one here. Um, I just know it's thirty six total.
There's partition walls within there and then.
Right, and, and these are all enclosed with a roof. It, it's not like a lean to structure or anything like that. They're completely enclosed.
So it's not like a pole barn.
No, 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 they're.
They're all, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, as far as the modifications are concerned. Um, these, these were all indicated in a November seventeenth township engineer letter. Um, I'll, I'll just go through them and then at the end of the planning commission, I can certainly answer. Um, so we did receive a waiver of the preliminary plan back, back in March of, of twenty twenty from planning commission supervisors. Uh, so that allowed this submission of the final land development plan. Uh, the first waiver was a waiver of sidewalk. Uh, there's two different requests here. The first was to provide sidewalk along Columbia Avenue. Um, as part of the letter, that waiver is recommended to be denied in a deferral agreement, uh, be recorded, which the applicant does not have any concern with. Uh, the other requirement is to provide sidewalk along the access drive. Um, and working with township staff, what we did was we provided a four foot sidewalk from Columbia Avenue that would then go back to the apartment units. Um, that sidewalk is part of the access drive. So this is a twenty four foot wide access drive, twelve feet on the right, and then on the left, it's sixteen feet. So it's not going to be a concrete sidewalk. It would be a paved extension of the driveway, but there'd be a, a straight line to indicate that that is a sidewalk. Um, the thought there was, obviously, people from the apartments can walk to Columbia Avenue, but if someone needed to use the bus, um, that the sidewalk would be there in order to accommodate that. Uh, so that had to do with the sidewalk. Uh, the second waiver was for the type C buffer planning. Uh, this had to do with the buffer planning up top. Uh, so the buffer planning is required to be thirty feet. Um, however, there's only nineteen feet between the property line. And the existing sidewalk, which was part of that parking lot years ago. Um, so we're requesting to reduce the number of trees that are required as part of the type C buffer. And in lieu of that, put in the forty evergreen trees to provide that screen. Again, there's already that eight foot security fence. And then the owner did put up that opaque black meshing. Uh, the third waiver had to do with, uh, Nate, can you go the second? Had to do with the loading ratio. Um, this was for the stormwater facility, specifically for rain garden two, which is a large rain garden. Uh, we're requesting five point nine to one for the impervious and twelve to one for the total. Uh, the requirements five and eight to one, so it does exceed it, uh, both ratios slightly. Uh, this is in an area of cars, so it is prone to sinkholes. Um, we did provide a letter from our geologist stating that, that they now, they did not have any concerns related to the increase in loading ratio. And it won't have an impact on, on the facility itself. Uh, rain garden one at the bottom here, that meets the requirements for both impervious and total drainage area. Uh, the fourth waiver was for volume, was, I'm sorry, for de-watering for the volume. So these, these two facilities have to de-water the two year volume between twenty four to seventy two hours. And we're requesting rain garden two, again, the larger one, to de-water in a hundred and seven hours, which again, just exceeds the seventy two hour maximum. Uh, the reason for that, a couple of reasons. One is the depth of stormwater in this area, the two year storm is about point eight feet. Uh, we did infiltration testing out here, uh, in this area, actually on the west side of this access drive. There was groundwater that was about a foot below ground. Uh, so then we moved testing on this side, and we were able to get testing on this side, get a good infiltration rate. Uh, but on the northern portion of the site, um, there was a, a shallow, uh, groundwater again, so we came above that. But the infiltration rate was rather slow. Um, so between the depth of the facility plus the slow, slow de-watering time, that increases. Uh, the de-watering time to a hundred and seven hours to exceed the seventy two. Um, in both of these facilities, there are under drains which tie into the Elvis structure and there's a cap. So in the event that the under drain does need de-water during a large rain event or something, uh, the cap can be removed, it can drain, and then the caps put back on. And that's part of the operation and maintenance agreement that'll be recorded. Uh, the fifth way that had to do with rate de-watering, and this has to do with the two through one hundred year storms for rate. Uh, that requirement is less than twenty four hours. Uh, rain garden one is about thirty three hours, and then rain garden two is ninety four point five. Again, a, a lot of that's the same reasoning, that slower infiltration, there's more depth in facility. Uh, in addition, this site is within the little connoisseur, the creek watershed, and that requires a fifty percent reduction of disturbed stormwater area. So the de-watering time goes up because we can't release as much water to meet the fifty percent reduction. So that's another reason for the waiver request. Uh, number six was the hundred and fifty foot centerline radius. We're proposing a hundred-foot radius for the access drive right around the corner of the property here. Again, we ran the truck turning, it worked with everything. Emergency services didn't have any concern with truck movement, so the hundred feet is able to accommodate emergency vehicles. The seventh waiver has to do with parking lot lighting, which is required for the apartment buildings for the sixteen spaces. So in lieu of putting, you know, one or two large, you know, fifteen or twenty-foot light poles, the applicant's proposing to have, at each apartment unit, have like a, either a light on the building itself or each apartment, or just a standalone light pole, you know, right next to the stoop. That would allow lighting of the front of the apartment building, the sidewalks leading out to the parking area, and then that would be able to provide some light into the parking area rather than having larger parking lot lights, which again, may impact some of the mobile homes, which are pretty close to the property.
But just clarify for me, what type of fixture you think they're going to put on the face of those buildings?
I think at this point, we anticipate just like a standalone light pole, like you have like the under your driveway or something.
Okay.
That, that's what we anticipate.
So not anything like a floodlight off of each of the buildings? Okay, because that, that I think would carry to the, the neighbors wouldn't want to see that.
Yeah.
I mean, we had, we had somebody in here, if you remember, maybe, I don't know, it's probably a year ago now, where,
Yeah, that guy.
where the church, one of the churches put up security lighting on the side, and it blasts into his bedroom across the street. There's nothing we can do because it didn't come in as a new plan, but here we have a new plan, and I want to make sure it were covered. Okay?
Yeah, and that was one of the reasons that we didn't want to put those larger parking lot lights, like you see at Walmart, just to kind of minimize the impact, but also provide the safety that's necessary.
Okay.
The eighth waiver is, Nate, can you go back to previous plan?
He backed him up. On our page, on our page, the other way around. Seven is another sidewalk.
Yeah, I think he combined that.
Oh, I'm sorry, on my notes, yeah. It's the same request, but it's under a separate section.
Yeah, okay.
So the other waiver is, so in addition to the type C buffer that's required up top, there's a type B buffer that's required between the zoning districts. Again, Enterprise is the north, Community Business Center to the south. You know, this is all one property, but there is a buffer that's required between basically the zoning district on the same property. So as I mentioned, there's that Lassa easement that runs through here, which is an eight-inch sewer lane that runs through here. In addition, you know, there's, there's a stormwater facility to the left, or I'm sorry, on the top. You know, there's storm piping that crosses over this area. So in lieu of providing that type B buffer along the entire, both sides of the zoning district line on the same property, we are proposing two landscape trees that would be located just off the apartment, and then just next to the dumpster and the storage unit on the top. Those are both outside of the easements and don't conflict with any of the stormwater design or any, any, doesn't impede into the Lassa easement. So those are all the waiver requests. Again, we have the David Miller letter dated November seventeenth. They recommend approval of all the modifications with the conditions noted. The applicant does not have any concern with any of those. You can see the majority of the technical items are addressed. Again, just waiting on HOP MPDS permit. We did submit all the draft agreements to the township. Those have been approved. We'll record those once the plan's approved. And then as part of all the documents, we'll post the financial security and then submit the required fees. So does Planning Commission have any questions, plan, and all the modifications that I, that I reviewed?
I think I know the answer to this, but is there sidewalk on that side of Columbia Avenue on, in any of those properties? I don't think there is.
There is not.
Okay.
I have a question for Township Engineer. Now, what, what policies do we even place here at the municipality in the event that a rain garden doesn't infiltrate? Meaning, I hear limited infiltration rates for obtained and shallow water tables? If you get out there and it's constructed and it doesn't infiltrate, what, what ways do we have to protect ourselves?
Sure, so there, yeah, there is, there is an operation and maintenance agreements that would, that would go with the project in there. The, the maintenance aspects could be looked at through that. If during construction, if that's what you're referencing, that it's, it would have to test again when excavated, and if those results came back and there was worse conditions or something that wasn't the same as the design, then it's being looked at at that stage as to what do we do now, I think, is, is what you're saying. Case by case, there's over excavation, there's other designs looked at. Brian's office would be asked to come up with another version of the plan, and they'd have to show all their calc's that what they would be doing would meet the ordinance. This has happened at the warehouses on Sunny Battery Road. Those, those big basins out front, there were issues out there. We worked with for two, and it just became like a redesign. If you drive by, you'll see some like stone chimneys out there, and some of their kind of like lined areas with stone, where they try to get extra infiltration where they can. There is a basin out there right now that has gone through two or three revisions and, and still won't de-water. So it's case by case, but it's usually that during construction test, if you will, where we're able to capture that. If it, if it is built and it was fine, then years later, there's an issue. There are some MS four components where they're required to do their own maintenance, and if they're not, then there is a, a hammer, if you will, that the municipality can come out and say, hey, you haven't maintained this. Here are records. Give us yours, and if you don't have them, then you have to make it comply, if you will. Does that help?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we have nine modifications. Looks like seven of them are straightforward, but a couple of them have some double-part components, a deferral and a condition, so if somebody would like to tackle that, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors approval of modifications two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine, and conditional approval of modifications one and seven with the deferral language in both of those, subject to staff and engineer comments.
Very good. I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mr. Polakowski, that we recommend approval of modifications two through six, number eight and number nine, and conditional approval of number one and seven, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those?
Aye.
Gotcha, Dan. So that would be unanimous, seven, zero. All right, then on the final plan itself.
Finish it. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We recommend to the supervisors approval of the final plan, subject to the staff and engineer comments.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rohr, seconded by Mrs. Byrne, that we recommend approval of the final land development plan for twenty-seven, twenty-seven Columbia Avenue, subject to staff and engineer comments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Hey, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it.
It'd be nice to have the space up there, right?
Yeah, there you are. You got to give your vote about five seconds before I call for it.
Got it.
All right. Is there any other, any old business that we haven't touched on? Did people have a chance to review Mr. Sturgis's project update? Have any questions for him? No? Okay, then I do have a little bit of news that I don't think everybody's heard yet, and that is that Mrs. Will has resigned, effective the end of the year, with her new child and whatever else. Takes a little too much of demand for her time, so supervisors will be, I believe, taking up at the reorganization meeting probably the nomination of these three guys to fill their slot. So.
Makes sense.
Yeah, originally she was going to come and see me, but then maybe saw her email. She's sick kids now, so that didn't work out.
And I grumble about a puppy.
About a what?
A puppy.
A puppy, yeah. All right, if there's nothing else to come before the commission, the meeting is adjourned. Seven thirty-eight.
Get it right this time.
Did we handle the water thing that we were supposed to?
Did we what?
We don't need to know that.
Oh, yeah, the one that was, the one that was added to the agenda was taken.
Yeah.
All right, everyone have a good holiday.
Yes, everybody. See you all in January.
Watch tomorrow.
Now, just slushy and rainy, slushy and rainy.
Good night, everyone.
Night, Dan.
See you, Dan.